All right, welcome everyone. I call the November tenth twenty twenty Bothel regular city council meeting to order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation twenty dash twenty eight regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, their connection will be terminated. For our phone and callers during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which material they are referencing so everyone can follow along. So at this moment, we'll take a moment to roll call, take roll call of the council members by position. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember McCollis? Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Door?
Here.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Thank you all present except for Councilmember McCollis.
Thank you. All right. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of the meeting guidelines. For all of our meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And if you're streaming the live video, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For our council members, if you wish to speak, please indicate by holding the yellow card in the lower corner of your screen. This will avoid two people talking at the same time. As well as remember to mute your microphone while not speaking and most importantly unmute your microphone before you start speaking. We'll see who breaks that one first. All right. First item is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. We have a proclamation tonight, recognition of Bob Ternell. World War Two veteran that we have in our own Bothell here. So whereas Robert Bob Ternell was born in Yakima, Washington in nineteen twenty four. And whereas Bob joined the United States Navy when he was eighteen in nineteen forty two and was nicknamed the Kid by his squadron comrades. As he is one of the youngest aviators in the Pacific Theater at the time of his deployment in nineteen forty four. And whereas Bob was deployed to the USS WASP and was part of the fighting squadron eighty eighty one, calling themselves the Freelancers. And whereas while on the WASP, Bob flew thirty eight missions making strikes against enemy ground installations, shipping, airfield and troops in Saigon, Camran Bay, Luzon, Taiwan, Hong Kong, Canton, Iwo Jima, Chichijima, Okinawa and Tokyo. And whereas seventeen of the fifty three aviators in the fighting squadron eighty one lost their lives. And in April of nineteen forty five, the squadron had finished its tour of combat duty and Bob returned to the States. And whereas Bob became commander US naval, US Navy while remaining in the Navy Reserve at Sandpoint Naval Air Station in Seattle until June of nineteen fifty four. And whereas Bob met his wife Jeannie in the summer of nineteen forty five in Richland, in Richland, Washington, one month before the war ended. And they married in nineteen forty six and went on to have three children, a son and two daughters. And whereas Bob earned a BA in Business Administration from the University of Washington as was and was employed by Boeing until his retirement in nineteen eighty five, settling in Bothell in twenty thirteen after a career of extensive traveling. And whereas Bob is a member of a generation of men and women whose bravery and sacrifices put an end to tyranny around the globe. Now therefore, I Liam Olson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the City of Bothell's recognition to Commander Robert H. Ternell, USN retired as a veteran from the greatest generation and thank him for his service and patriotism. So I just want to personally thank him for his service and everything he did. My grandpa was involved in World War Two and served abroad. And even though he didn't speak about it much, some of my family researched about what he did and it was amazing. And and for how little they speak about it for such accomplishments and sacrifices that they made, it's it's amazing and I can see how they're called the greatest generation. Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, thank you very much. The greatest generation. You're absolutely right. And it's so appropriate to have it on Veterans Day, Veterans Day. Armistice Day. It came about because the first world wars ended November eleventh at eleven o'clock. So they decided to celebrate that and they called it Armistice Day. That was the word to end all wars. A poppy kind of signifies Veterans Day nowadays. And that came about by a Colonel by the name of John McCray. He was a surgeon. He was a Canadian surgeon that worked in the British Army. And one day he had a friend of his that died in his hospital and the minister wasn't around to give a eulogy. So John McCray wrote something down. And it says it's called in Flanders Fields. In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row. That marks our place in the sky, the lark still bravely singing fly scares herd amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved. And now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe to you from failing hands we throw the torch be yours to hold it high. If you break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep though poppies grow in Flanders Fields. And that became kind of the anthem for World War One, the war to end all wars. And so poppies became relevant. World War Two started, some will argue that it was a continuation of World War One, but World War Two started and over twelve million Americans answered the call to defend our country and the world against tyranny. Twelve million, not all of them were combat veterans, a select few were. And a select few were actually Navy aviator, aviators. I read this and I hear he went, rolled in on Saigon, Cameron Bay, Luzon, Taiwan, Hong Kong, Canton, Iwo Jima, Chichijima, Okinawa, Tokyo. I mean, I cannot gather what that's like to roll in on some of those in that F six Hellcat that was just a screaming machine. He was maverick of his day. We all liked the Top Gun thing, but the naval aviators were a breed apart. They were a special group. There weren't that many of them and yet their contributions were immense. He was in the Great Marianas Turkey Shoot. He was up in the Philippine Sea for the Battle of the Philippine Sea, which was the largest naval battle ever fought in the world and probably will be forever. There were, there were thousands of ships involved in that. I just want to thank you, sir. Commander, you've had a job well done. You've served your country well. I want to thank you. I think Bothell thanks you today. Tomorrow you get a little bit more recognition, I hope, from the state and from the United States, but thank you very much, sir.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I don't know how to add to that. I just, I was just thinking of all the heroic stories that I've heard as, as you were speaking, Councilmember Agnew, thinking about my father-in-law who was also a kid and joined, I think it was the army and he was on Normandy and his job at age seventeen was stacking the body parts on the beach. And hearing, hearing these stories from my father-in-law, my dad was in the Korean War, Mr. Ternell in World War Two, Councilmember Agnew, Vietnam. The stories of bravery that, that have to be pulled out of you on this, on the, on the spot. Most of us don't even know. And so, so thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I don't know how to, to express appreciation besides taking the charge of living this life well because so much was paid for us to live free on this land. So thank you very much.
I understand the family wishes to say a few words also. So I think you just have to unmute. There you go.
Okay, I'm Julie Ternell. I'm Bob's daughter and my sister is also on board tonight as well as Michael Naya, who is kind of the catalyst who started this whole thing. But first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. That was, that was quite moving and we so appreciate your, your kind words. I want to take a moment to recognize a remarkable young man who has joined us from New Jersey and his name is Michael Naya. I see you, Michael. And from the time that he was a young kid and now he's only eighteen, so maybe that to all of us is still a young kid. He developed a passion for stories of World War Two veterans who are still living. And someday would like to write a book about their history and experiences during the war. He found Dad and me through some, some, a lot of research actually. As and as he did with many other veterans, he interviewed my dad and collected their stories. So to mark the seventy fifth anniversary of the end of World War Two and in order to recognize these veterans for their honorable service, he contacted each city mayor in the cities in which they live. And he asked about the possibility of doing a mayoral proclamation. So Michael, I, I thank you so very much for setting this into motion for us and being the catalyst to have this occur. And so many thanks to you, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Dad and my family and I are honored and very grateful for marking this occasion with this marvelous proclamation. And we are full of appreciation and thank you for doing this just the day before Veterans Day. It's wonderful. Thank you.
May I say something?
Please do.
Julie, I just want to thank you and your family for keeping in touch with me for the past two years. I never thought two years ago here we would be sitting on Zoom and I will be honoring your father for his service seventy five years later. And I am so grateful to the mayor and his staff for allowing this night to happen. And I am grateful that they're remembering our nation's heroes the day before Veterans Day and tomorrow on Veterans Day. And although this year hasn't been very good for anybody, I hope that twenty twenty one is better and brighter for everybody. And thank you, Julie, and thank you, Mayor and his councilman. Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
Did Kathy want to say anything?
I don't think so.
I don't. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. All right. First of all, thank you for this, from the city of Bothell and thank you, Michael. And thank you, Julie, my sister, for getting this all together. But really thank you daddy and I love you so much and I am very, very proud of you. And you deserve this recognition. You've deserved it for a long time and congratulations.
That's very nice.
Thank you.
Love you, Dad.
Yeah, love you too, sweetie.
Well, yeah, thank you everyone for making this happen. It was definitely a great experience and we're more than just excited to celebrate on a Veterans Eve, I guess you want to say. So yeah, and still being able to, you know, speak with you in, in virtually. It's great and you know, thank you again for your service.
He said, thank you. I don't know if you could hear him, but he said, thank you.
No, it's coming across.
Yeah, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. We so appreciate you guys.
All right, well, have a great evening and we'll move on to our next items.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Bye, bye, Michael. Michael. Bye, Dad.
All right, onto our council committee reports. Does anyone have a report to make out to the council? Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I'll try to keep it short. Can I include sitting in on the chamber meeting today? Just a little bit of feedback on what I was hearing from the chamber.
If you keep it brief, that'd be.
Okay, I'll keep it brief.
Right in.
I was just impressed by the number of financial companies that are participating in the chamber and how, how they're a heartbeat for keeping our, our city financially solid and the people who live here. So that, that was, that it was really interesting to hear their comments. And that, but now for LTAC. I have a little update on LTAC. The Bothell Cares Pass launched twenty Bothell-based tourism discounts for hotels, restaurants and shops. It's free and it's downloadable and people can find it at Begin at Bothell. Also at Begin at Bothell, if people are looking for gift ideas, there is a sip and stay passports that links our Bothell Hotels with the wineries. And then the one downside bit of information that I have to share with you is that revenue from hotel motel is down by sixty five percent. LTAC has reduced their expenditures and work and need advertising and the reserves thankfully are there to kind of help buffer us through the times that we're in. So that's, that's my, the sum of my report.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. City clerk, I understand we have some visitor comments this evening. Well, let me, let me just go, let me go through just a little housekeeping. So in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation twenty dash twenty eight regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign up sheets. For those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, written comments submitted to the city clerk no, no later than three PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. So I just want to ask that all the city council members take in the public comment and this is their opportunity to come and speak to us and, and be heard. And keep it as such and not, you know, respond to comments directly or turn it in into a debate. It's especially in this virtual format. It's, it's so challenging for that. And I want, I want our citizens to feel that they're heard and, and not participate, not participating in a one-way debate. So I know everyone on city council appreciates the comments, but I just wanted to reiterate that. And so everyone that comes to make public comments can feel welcome and heard. So city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We received eight written comments that were submitted to council. They were forwarded, forwarded to council and they will be made part of the records. I'll go through those first. The first one was from Rachel Krensky of Eastside LifeWire and Jack Edderton. They were together on Eastside Baby Corner. And they wrote regarding human services funding and the twenty twenty one budget. The next one was from Kim Gertis from Kindering. She also wrote regarding the human services funding and the twenty twenty one budget. Kevin Kiernan from the Planning Commission wrote regarding the DEI position. Anna Mendro wrote in regarding the budget and the DEI position. Laura Thomas from Hope Link wrote in regarding human services funding. Jessica Campbell wrote in regarding the budget. Carmen Dalziel, I hope I said her name correctly, North Shore School Foundation, she wrote in regarding human services funding. And Sarah Gusterson wrote in regarding public engagement and inclusive city council meetings. So after that, I have ten people that are online, I believe they're online to speak. The first one is Connie Weber. So Deputy City Clerk Robin Schaefer, could you panel Connie in? And then once Connie gets here, Connie will have three minutes to speak. And it takes a minute.
And can, okay, great. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, my name is Connie Weber and I've lived in Bothell for thirty years. I also submitted something in writing, but I'm happy to give my comments here as well. I'm not sure why they weren't included. I've lived here in Bothell for almost thirty years and over that time I've seen our community grow and change a great deal. During that time, I've supported many collaborations and participated in a lot of activities that were aimed to support the more vulnerable members of our community. In the past several months, I've seen firsthand the needs of those vulnerable families grow. For example, I make a weekly delivery for Eastside Baby Corner. And as I pick up diapers, formula and other essentials for the families, I've noticed that the numbers of families and also the amount of assistance that they need lately is increasing. Also recently, I belong to Emmanuel Presbyterian Church and recently our church brought in several hundred pounds of fresh apples for the Bothell Food Banks. And while I was setting up the delivery for all of those apples, I spoke to each of the coordinators at the food banks. And the consensus among those coordinators was that the families who use the food banks are increasing. One organizer told me that a year ago they would get a few dozen families each week through their food bank. And this year they're seeing several hundred families each week. She mentioned that most of these families are folks who had never needed to accept assistance before. I just want to say this is a difficult time and an uncertain time for our community. We're just beginning to see the effects of the pandemic and this is just not time to change course and cut the funding for human services organizations. Families depend on the organizations. The organizations really need the city's resources and support now more than ever. Please reinstate the human services grant program. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next on the list is Kevin Kiernan. Kevin Kiernan, and please.
Am I on?
You are. I can't see you, but you're there and you have three minutes to speak. Do you have, do you have your camera?
Yeah, and it was working previously. Let me see, is it, start video. Here we go when you.
Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
I thank you. Kevin Kiernan here, speaking as Chair of the Planning Commission. We submitted a letter to the council and I'm going to read that letter at the request of the commission. Over, so here it is. Over the past eighteen months, the planning commission has solicited public comment on code amendments and city shaping policies which will impact the Canyon Park Subarea and the greater city for generations. As we learn about and evaluate the proposed plan, we recognize Bothell continues to grow more reverse demographically and the Canyon Park Subarea is home to many cultural anchors which reflect this diversity. And our discussions of code amendments and plans affecting these cultural anchors, this course has naturally revolved around topic diversity and equity. The Subarea Plan, along with other planning documents and policies, need to take into account these issues. We also recognize our responsibility to reflect the council's recent resolution on diversity, equity, inclusion in our considerations. Quoting, whereas institutional and systematic racism results in inequitable outcomes for Black, Indigenous and people of color in other marginalized communities, including LGBTQ plus individuals, immigrants and those with disabilities, such unjust treatments and biases. Our education, government services, housing, other economic opportunities. Like all of our work on the planning commission, the Canyon Park Subarea Plan directly impacts housing and economic opportunities for Bothell residents. We appreciate the efforts of the city's Community Development Department, especially staff taking the initiative to form a partnership with UW students to provide a preliminary equity analysis of the Subarea changes. Council has heard recommendations from the Dive-In Committee and from Bothell's need for a staff position specializing in diversity, equity and inclusion, DEI. We find that through our deliberations that such a position would benefit our decision-making process, given that we are naturally limited by our own biases and perspectives when developing recommendations for the council. Input from dedicated DEI staff member would address gaps between our personal lived experiences and those disenfranchised or otherwise unable to engage in our public process. For these reasons, the planning commission recommends a hire of a dedicated DEI staff member to city staff and to include funding for such a position in our twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. Respectfully, Kevin Kiernan, Chair on behalf of the Planning Commission. And I'd like to add that a budget is a policy document representing the values of an organization. This ad represents the values of the Bothell community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christian Joyner. So if you could panel her in, Robin, that'd be great. Let the record show that Councilmember McCollis joined at six twenty seven PM. Hi, Kristen. Can you hear us?
Yes, hello. Hello, council members and city staff. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community. I'm Kristen Joyner. I've been a Bothell resident for about thirty years. In that time, we've seen increasing needs for help due to burdensome housing prices and stressors on people's budgets from recessions and most recently the pandemic. Bothell has been called a desert of human services, but I know the council and staff in recent years has seen the need to provide care to our own residents. When we build up the people who are struggling, we build up the neighborliness and the pride in our city. So I was proud of the times I've seen the city pay into arch funding to support affordable housing and when the human services grant funding went to eight dollars per capita. This year, at the height of a pandemic and an oncoming recession and high unemployment is not the year to cut human services funding. I love the idea of a community resource center. I know that at Bothell United Methodist Church, we've been a frontline for people who need assistance. When a person in crisis walked into our doors on a Friday afternoon, crying for help to stay sober and waiting and wanting to get into treatment, I had to tell her that the only help I could offer her was to call on the police, that they would have the resources to help her. The person that came in wanted to do everything she could to stay out of the legal system. She'd been there, done that, and she was doing her best not to go back. And she was traumatized all over again. I was able to convince her that this was the only way, the only way to get help available. So yes, we need local accessible twenty-four seven assistance that doesn't mean a uniformed armed officer. And I hope that the Community Resource Center vision includes the community in discussions about what is needed. I love our local police and I know that they will do whatever they can, but that's because I know Chief Suberlik has been extremely open and helpful to me. But the people crying for help didn't know that and frankly would rather not be introduced to the police and court system. This version of a community resource center cannot be successful without the support and funding of agencies. The human services grant money should not be needed to fund the Community Resource Center. The city of Shoreline has a Community Resource Center, Community Court, that's funded by grants and not funded by the city. Budgets are a moral document. How the money is spent is an indicator of our values. Yes, staff and the Human Services Committee need to figure out what to spend the money on and find a reliable way to audit that spending. And I would suggest that the council members as representatives of the people of Bothell should, could, or may have an idea how to figure this out. And there is knowledge at the North Urban Human Services Alliance as well, and also at the North Shore School District Human Services Consortium. If Bothell does not fund human services assistance for Bothell residents, you are asking other cities to fund assistance for Bothell residents. And I feel it's hypocritical to do that. I would ask you to look around to the other cities who are not only continuing to fund human I would ask you to look around to the other cities who are not only continuing to fund human services, but are increasing their funding. Care to the most vulnerable increases the strength of not only our moral responsibility, but also our community as a whole. Thank you very much for these tough budget decisions.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Brooke Knight from the North Shore Senior Center. Robin, could you panel her in, please?
She should be on her way.
Thank you.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brooke Knight. I'm the CEO for the North Shore Senior Center. Nice to see so many familiar faces. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed elimination of human services funding in the 2021 budget. The funding that we and other human services agencies receive really goes towards helping some of our community's most vulnerable people. Seniors, people with disabilities, people with Alzheimer's, kids who are struggling, people involved in domestic violence situations. In 2019, just at the Senior Center alone, funds allowed us to serve over 3,600 unique Bothell residents, 3,600 Bothell residents. We are still trying to figure out exactly what we will need to cut if these funds do not come through in 2021. But we do know, for one thing, we will not be able to provide the paratransit services that we offer to Bothell residents living in Snohomish County. At this point, those are the only funding that we receive that allows us to provide paratransit service into Snohomish County are the funds we receive from the City of Bothell. So that means that those seniors and people with disabilities who rely on those services to get to the grocery store, to get to the doctor, to get to the Senior Center, to visit their friends, will no longer have that opportunity to do that. Secondly, I just want to mention the fact that a lot of the funds that we are receiving are actually highly leveraged and are bringing additional funds into the community. For example, the funds that we receive from the City of Bothell actually leverage about $50,000 a year in State Department of Transportation funds coming from the federal government. So not only is it benefiting our local community, it's bringing actual additional revenue into our local community to support vulnerable people. I fully understand budget decisions are difficult. I'm facing a lot of them right now myself. But I really truly believe that this is not the time to be cutting services to the most vulnerable in our community. We have seen the need rise exponentially over the past several months. Someone else mentioned people accessing food services. I will say, just as one very simple example, we used to have about 30 people who accessed our food pantry every week. We're now seeing about 700 people a week. And I fully anticipate that the need for those services will be even worse in 2021. So this is, this is really not the time to be cutting those services. My, my ask to you really is to look for other ways to save money, look for other ways to cut costs in the budget, because we can't afford to cut on the backs of our community's most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Ed Sterner. Robin, could you please panel him in?
He should be coming in any moment.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Sterner. You have three minutes to speak.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the Council with regard to human services budget. Clearly, a topic of the evening. I served for 12 years on the Lake Forest Park City Council, including during the Great Recession. So I have sympathy for the struggles you're facing to have a balanced budget and still meet the needs of your citizens. Tonight, I'm appearing on behalf of the North Urban Human Services Alliance, of which I'm a board member. I believe a written statement from the Alliance has been presented to you, so I'll simply provide some summary remarks. I'm pleased to report that the cities of Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, and Kenmore have all found ways to have budgets for next year that not only preserve their assistance for human services, but increase their support. In this seriously challenging time, this support for human services is critical. In conversations that the Alliance has had with several of you, it's been observed that there seems to be a lack of information regarding what expenditures by the city on human services is bought in the way of services benefiting residents of Bothell. Having been a city council member, I suspect that like LFP contracts, the Bothell contracts with those providing services call for periodic reports, at least quarterly for larger grants, possibly only annual for smaller grants. I'm aware that Center for Human Services and Hope Link have been providing these reports. And I would expect that others have provided such reports as well, and they are sitting in some electronic file folder that could be made available to the Council. I am aware that last year, Center for Human Services provided over 4,000 hours of counseling to residents of Bothell. I know that the demand for assistance by residents of Bothell from Hope Link will likely exceed a doubling by the end of this year as compared to 2019. So this is no time to be cutting human services support. If anything, it's a time to be increasing it. Like Bothell, Shoreline has been interested in establishing a location where citizens can do one-stop shopping for human services support. And they have done so in cooperation with human services providers that help citizens in Shoreline and nearby cities and areas. But this was done while supporting these human services agencies. It was not done by cutting all support to them while planning was going on with regard to such a service center. I would note that according to Bothell policy, human services funding was established at a level of $8 per capita, representing an annual commitment of $356,000. I'm not aware that this policy has been considered for a change, but the budget, as I understand it, certainly has dramatically changed this policy without discussion or public comment. Even if the $8 per capita policy has not changed to reflect inflation since it was set, with population increases in Bothell, I would expect that there should be a slight increase in funds set aside to support human services. We strongly urge the Council to at least maintain funding of human services at current levels, even as it enters into a planning phase with regard to a possible services center that could be linked to its municipal court. I spent nearly 18 years as a volunteer on the Oversight Committee for the King County Juvenile Justice Operational Management Plan. As one advisor to the Oversight Committee observed, "When you see bodies floating down a river, and you are busy pulling them out but able to save only a few, the best strategy is to head upstream and see why they are falling in, and if possible, provide a helping hand so that does not happen."
Your time has expired. Thank you. Next on the list, we have Beretta. I'm, I hope I say this right, Beretta Gomillion. Robin, if you could panel her in, that'd be great.
Hi, can you see me?
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, I will just talk with you, and you can't see me.
Great, you have three minutes. I'll start the timer now.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Beretta Gomillion, Executive Director of the Center for Human Services. In the best of times, I would strongly advocate for human services, get the needs always there and the benefits proven. But Councilmembers, we are in a pandemic. The reasons for funding human services at this time are self-evident. I do want to point out, though, that just as the economy will take years to recuperate, it will take many of your residents years to recover from the emotional and mental impact of the coronavirus. And unfortunately, they don't have the, their fail-safe coping technique, which is connecting with and receiving support from families and friends, as readily available to them now. I want to alert you to the fact that if human services is not funding, specifically counseling, food banks, and services that increase people's resiliency, if it's not funded, the health and well-being of Bothell residents will hit rock bottom. I'm glad it's not my job to prioritize between other people's jobs, ballparks, sidewalks, and the emotional health of Bothell residents and so forth. But I do urge you to work with human service providers and find a way not to lose these essential services. Thank you.
Thank you. There you are. Thank you. Next, we have on the list Andrew Nelson.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello, city councilors. My name is Andrew Nelson. I'm 23 years old. I've lived in Bothell my entire life. It is my belief and many others that we need, Bothell needs, a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission as staff member to make all feel welcome in our city. When I think of Bothell, I think of our town motto, "Welcome to Bothell for a day or for a lifetime." And that, and that should include everybody. I've always viewed my hometown as a great place to grow up and live in. But that doesn't mean that inequality doesn't exist here. You know, both those statements can be true. We can, we can be a great city, but have some inequality and need, need to fix that. That we need to understand that this is a need for our city and not a want. This is a crisis that has been going on for far too long in our country, and that, that includes Bothell. We don't have time to wait for this. This is a now issue. Your consist, your consistency has been calling in every meeting, you know, making their voice heard for probably about the past month, maybe a bit more. Myself and others have made a petition that has 240 signatures as of November 9. If the city is serious about learning about their neighbors, and I think an employee focused on diversity will help. I want you all to think about this and, you know, make the morally sound choice and fund this for your neighbors. We do have the money to do this, and it, it is a, it is a need. So please get Bothell a win today, or this month, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Tamara Wood.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Wood. Do you have a camera option, or are you just calling?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna call in.
Okay, great. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Dear city councilors, my name is Tamara Wood. And as a citizen and member of anti-racist communities Bothell, I would like to urge the city to align the 2021-2022 budget with the city's stated values and priorities in regards to human services, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and community policing. Human services funding must be restored to the budget. A pandemic is the worst possible time to cut funding to human services when it is human need that is most affected by a global health crisis leading to economic crisis locally. Bothell's human services needs are not less during a pandemic. They are added upon. Residents of Bothell still are struggling with the effects of hunger, homelessness, drug addiction, and domestic violence. In fact, many of these issues are made worse and are becoming even more underserved than before the pandemic. Previous levels of funding have been $350,000 a year. The city and its residents can be grateful to the CARES Act for federal assistance during the pandemic. And the city needs to know that federal assistance does not take away the city's responsibility to continue addressing human needs that existed before the pandemic and will be, will continue to affect our community long after the federal funds are exhausted. The community court will not be functioning in time to address the needs unmet by human, removing human services funding. Council support for the community court and the public's decision to fund the public safety levy does not negate the need for human services funding. Human services, the community court, and the radar program must work in concert to appropriately address the needs of the community. Instead, the budget increases, police and fire budgets, an additional $2 million, while claiming austerity measures for the rest of the city departments. The public approved the levy. Additional increase, increases should not be included in the budget without a vote of the people. If deep cuts are needed, as has been communicated, police and fire funding ought to be subject to comparable cuts or frozen at pre-pandemic levels, not increased. I cannot help but wonder what a diversity, equity, and inclusion director would say if we had one on staff when looking at the proposed budget for next year. Removing human services funding will reinforce inequalities that exist in our community and disproportionately affect those most hurt by the pandemic. Bothell needs a DEI director on staff to prevent proposals like this from being seriously considered. A budget shows the city's values in action. The proposed budget, as it is currently written with human services funding removed and no action taken on the city's anti-discrimination and inclusion resolution, shows that the city does not prioritize or value equity in a time of pandemic and racial reckoning. I urge the city council to direct the city manager to restore human services funding, add a DEI position, and reduce police and fire funding to previous levels or below in order to adequately respond to the budget crisis the city finds itself in during a global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Rami Alcabra.
Hello.
Hello, thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Honorable city council members and esteemed city manager and city government staff, again, my name is Rami Alcabra. I've been a resident of West Hill neighborhood for about 11 years. I'm also an American Muslim and leader in the Muslim community who constantly worries about my, my families and the Muslim community's safety. The following topic is very important to me, my community, and the rest of the people of color. And it's regarding the 2021-2022 budget, specifically the, you know, DEI and human services budgets. In the last meeting, you had, on your data on page 429 of the agenda, unfortunately, we have a much shorter agenda this, this time. It showed that a third of the residents of Bothell are people of color, and one in five are immigrants, and that's from 2018. I assure you that those numbers have increased in the past two years, especially hopefully with the new census data that will come out here soon, we'll, we'll know this. And whereas I commend the Diversity and Inclusion Committees' dive-ins, hard work, and research about two months ago, the focus seems internally on city government, not the City of Bothell community at large. Moreover, DEI doesn't appear to be a priority because there's no commitment by the city to invest, and I emphasize the word "invest", in a DEI program focused on the community at large. We, the citizens of Bothell, approved a public levy, public safety levy a couple of years ago. It's unclear to me and a lot of my fellow community members why police and fire budgets have increased by around $2 million, billion from funds outside of that levy, while budgets are cut for the rest of the city, the city departments. So if you can find funds for police and fire from non-apportioned budgets, then it seems that you can find funds for DEI specifically and human services generally. Diversity and equity and human services are important right now. The equity cannot, the equity can, cannot be kicked down the road anymore. We want action now. You already issued a resolution, so you've talked the talk. I urge you to walk the walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Olson, that's the last person I have on the list to speak. I don't know if there's any other audience members who wish to speak, but if there are, we would ask that they use the raise their hand function, and we'll call on them as we see it pop up. And I am not seeing anybody.
All right. Thank you, city clerk. Oh, all right. Let's move on to AB 20-142. So we have a public hearing and a consideration of an ordinance amending BMC Chapter 12.64 Downtown Subarea Regulations, revising outdoor space regulations.
Listen, did we, I hate to interrupt, did we vote on the consent agenda?
We did not. I flew right by that. Let's back things up. All right. I will look for a motion. Councilmember Agnew.
I move we pass the consent agenda.
Councilmember McAuliffe. All right, I'll look for a second. Councilmember Duer.
I second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to move, to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Councilmember Duer. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorns.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Duer.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you for that couch, that catch, city clerk. So we'll move back to AB 20-142. So I'll open a public hearing, and I will turn it over to Paul Byrne to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item was ready for presentation and discussion and decision tonight. However, once we published the agenda, we received some last-minute comments, and staff reviewed those comments, feel that they have some merit that we need to investigate. And so the staff recommendation at this point is to accept whatever public comment there is tonight, and then continue the public hearing to a date certain of December 6th for the full staff presentation, discussion, and decision.
All right, city clerk, we didn't have any, one that wanted to make any live comments.
We did not. However, we did have two people that submitted written comments regarding this issue. That was Bart Flora and Tyler Churchill. So those were, I believe, forwarded to council. If they weren't, then we will make sure they are. But we have nobody that signed up to speak verbally.
All right, thank you. So city attorney, the process at this point is just, do we continue it to December 8th?
There would need to be a motion to continue to a date certain of December 8th.
All right, Councilmember Duer.
I motion to continue to a date certain of December 8th.
Councilmember Agnew.
I second that.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Duer, a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Zorns.
Will we be deciding on December 8th, or will we be doing what we initially planned and create a public hearing on this?
So the public hearing was opened, and so it will be continued to the 8th. You can certainly allow for further public comment at that point, but that on December 8th is when Dave Boyd will be doing his presentation, and he will be answering questions. And then council will, if this passes, council will then be deliberating and making a decision when we're the other on this item.
On the changes that are in this agenda bill?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, so seeing no further discussion, city clerk.
Please say yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorns.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Duer.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, everyone. So on to our next item, AB 20-143. Consideration of approving the Bothell Arts Commission selection of artist John Fleming for conceptual artwork design related to the rebuild of Fire Stations 42 and 45, and acknowledge foregoing the collection of permit fees associated with the art installation. So I will be looking for, I believe it was our tourism manager, Danae McGee, to present on this item.
Mayor Olson, I'm not showing that Ms. McGee is on the line just yet. She's not in our, in our pool of attendees. So we do, however, have Katrina Sather here. I don't know if she's prepared or if, I don't know. She's here from the Arts Commission, so.
Well, I say, let's take a five-minute break and see if we can get Danae onto the meeting, and we'll move on from there. So let's return at 7:02.
Councilmember McAuliffe, if you could please mute your mic.
Sorry.
All right, welcome back, everyone. I believe we have Danae on the line.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and we can see you.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. Had a little technical difficulty. All right, let me share my screen with you, and I'll bring up my presentation. Can everyone see my screen now?
Not yet.
Can you see it now? Can you see my screen?
Nope. It's that Nuverizing commercial. Can you see me now?
All right, let's see if I can.
Oh, we're seeing some action.
See it?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. All right, well, good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council. We are here tonight to introduce you to artist John Fleming for Fire Station 42 and potentially Fire Station 45. My name is Danae McGee. I'm the tourism manager, and I'm also the Arts Commission staff liaison here at the city. And joining me also is Katrina Sather, and she has been a member of the Bothell Arts Commission since 2017, and she is one of the jurors that helped select John. We're asking council this evening to approve John Fleming as the artist to incorporate his artwork into Fire Station 42 and potentially Fire Station 45. And we are also asking council to acknowledge foregoing the collection of permit fees associated with the art installation. The anticipated permit fees are based on material and labor costs in the amount of $1,450 that would be foregone if approved by council this evening. And I will now turn it over to Katrina to talk about the artist's education and experience.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Bothell City Council. Let me introduce you to John Fleming, University of New Mexico, Masters in Architecture and in Northern Arizona University BFA in Ceramics. John has worked from 2002 to present in Redmond, Seattle, Bellevue, Arizona, and in Vail and Denver, Colorado, and I'd love to show you just a few of his pieces, if I might. This piece is in downtown Redmond. This is titled Signals. It's made of repurposed aluminum and LED lighting, and it was commissioned by the Redmond Arts Commission in 2014. This you might recognize. This is Glass Blades. It is right outside Mopop at the Seattle Center. It is painted steel, and this was commissioned by the city of Seattle in 2002. This is Kaleida Wall. This is in downtown Bellevue, paint on aluminum, and this was commissioned in 2000, I think it was 16, yeah, 2016.
All right, now we'll talk a little bit about how we got to where we are today. Back in 2009, council at the time adopted ordinance number 2013, establishing a 1% for public art fund. And these are on capital, city-owned capital improvement projects. And within the ordinance, it states that city projects which involve the use of general obligation bond proceeds must use the funds appropriated for projects consistent with the ordinance approved by city council. And what this essentially means is that the money that has been, that has been adopted for this, for this, for this fire station rebuild can only be used for the fire station, and it can't be pooled and used for other projects. In 2017, council adopted Resolution Number 1368, establishing a public art policy. And it was that policy that was used to determine John Fleming as the artist for this project. On July 7th, council adopted $68,000 of bond funds for the Fire Station Public Art Project. Once we knew the amount of money that was dedicated for this project, we did a request for qualifications using West half's Cafe platform, and this is a platform that is used regionally, nationally, internationally by artists and arts organizations. We received over 190 artist submissions, and the jury that we put together was made up of an artist, the architect for the Fire Station Rebuilds, Fire Chief Crone, and two members of the Arts Commission, Ann Lewis and Katrina. A rubric and scoring sheet was used, and the jurors narrowed the submissions to three finalists. A $1,000 honorarium for each finalist was given to create conceptual art design for the Fire Station 42 rebuild. The jury met and reviewed the proposed art designs, had some questions, and the follow-up answers provided by the artists made it very clear, and the jury unanimously selected John Fleming as their artist of choice. On October 8th, the Bothell Arts Commission approved the jury's selection of John Fleming based on the art and the integration into the architecture and how well that was done, the accessible and interactive nature of the artwork, the jury's interest in John's willingness to also consider branding the LED numbers of the 42 and Fire Station 45. And I will turn it back over to Katrina now, and she will talk about John's design incorporation.
Thank you, Danae. So this is the best overall view of John's work. So you can see that the LED lit numbers of 42 and then the vertical running fire station next to the left of the numbers there. And I want to mention, John's a local artist, which was also important in part of our selection process. So really dominating here is the fire engine red. The remaining components at the entrance, you can see the LED red lens running atop, thank you, Danae, the soffit there on the outside of the entrance, and then the laser. And then the laser cut Fire Engine hat images, and they have a parabolic lens behind those behind those laser cutouts. And then over here on the other side, you've got, those are just simply, those are laser cut out different fire hats throughout time, which cast a shadow on the building. And then you have the central wood blocks with the LED lighting running behind those. So John's inspiration was really the red and chrome of the fire truck and the special hats, in his words, that firefighters will wear. The parabolic mirrors and the red lenses are repurposed from railroad crossings used in previous installations, as you can see the Redmond piece up there in the corner. Artists will often use and repurpose recycled items in their art. So various images of fire hats, which are laser cut into high gloss red aluminum panels, those are at the entry wall, and then 25 parabolic mirrors are mounted behind those fire hat cutouts, which create an ever-changing, interactive visual effect, giving it a very interactive and playful feel of art for all ages to enjoy, which for me personally, really reflects an ongoing opportunity of engagement between the community and our firefighters.
Thank you, Katrina. So the LED tape lights illuminate the 42 and potentially the 45 with the budget permits to do Fire Station 45. The lighting can be programmed to light up, pulse, and/or change colors to acknowledge a fire or medic response. The 12-inch diameter repurposed railroad lenses with low voltage LED lights are surface mounted to the underside of the soffit canopy. The laser cutout fire hats at the entrance wall with internal grid parabolic melt mirrors extend 16 feet inside the lobby interior. And then the laser cuts fire hats without parabolic lenses over here, where I'm pointing, will cast a shadow onto the wall. This image is here to show everyone that option number five, which is the central wood block with LED lighting in the red vertical slots, would be eliminated if we can successfully add the LED lighting to Fire Station 45 and stay within the 68,000 allocated budget. And that concludes our presentation, thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Let me see if I can see the whole council here. Councilmember Agnew.
Well, thank you for your presentation, it looked very nice. I did want to comment to both of you that they're actually called helmets, not hats.
Well, Tom, if anyone would know, it would be you, thank you for that correction, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So Member Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the presentation, Danae and Katrina. It looks like it's in keeping with kind of what we already have, which is nice. I have some concerns about the process and how the jury makeup happened, because back when the Arts Commission was formed, the Arts Commission did the choosing, and there was no jury. And so now the Arts Commission is two members of a five-person panel. And I don't know how the artist that's on the panel got chosen, I don't know who's choosing who's on the panel, but that isn't what originally was happening, so I'm just wondering. I assume then that it's not in the ordinance, and that was just something that, a policy that we just decided to change.
Actually, it's within the public art policy, and so the policy clearly outlines the process that we will take for selecting the jury, as well as selecting the artwork. It also includes how we will maintain artwork within our public art collection, as well as how we deaccession.
So was the policy changed between when the Commission worked on the City Hall arts selections and afterward?
Well, the committee that came together to select the artwork for City Hall was a committee that was selected by Council, that was a temporary ad hoc committee just developed for the artwork for City Hall. And then the Arts Commission was formed after that in 2017. And that same year that the Arts Commission was formed, we brought forward, the Arts Commission brought forward the public art policy for adoption, which was adopted by Council after the Arts Commission was formed.
So can I ask who decides who's on the jury?
Well, the jury was, is also in the public art policy. And you have to have an artist on the jury, you have to have typically the architect on the panel if it is a piece of artwork that is incorporated into infrastructure. It also has to include community individuals that are specifically tied to the project, so in that case, it was Fire Chief Crone, Crone, excuse me, and then up to one to two members of the Arts Commission would be on the jury.
So who chooses who's on the jury?
Well, I made several of those selections, and then the Arts Commission made the selections for who would be on the serving from the Arts Commission.
So right now, the way the policy works, the Arts Commission has a minority vote on the selection of the artist.
Well, I guess, based on the five individuals that were part of the jury, I would say that that is true, but that's just the way that the policy is written and the way that the jury selection is done. So if we were to change that policy so that there'd be a majority of Arts Commissioners on the panel, the jury panel, we would need to change the policy.
Okay, because originally, the Arts Commission was responsible for that 1% for the arts. And so this is the first time it's being implemented on a project other than the City Hall. And so I am just curious, because it seems as though then the Arts Commission has a diminished role in that selection, which is, you know, kind of why we have commissions and boards so that they can make the choices. So that's something I'll look at.
Yeah, yeah, in the public art policy, after the jury makes the recommendations, those recommendations must be forwarded to the Arts Commission for final approval. And then once they make that approval, which they unanimously did in October, then it goes to Council for the final decision.
Well, I'm glad in this case, it's worked out, and everyone seems happy with the selection. I guess I just would have, I had expected a larger role for the Arts Commission in the process. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
As we were going through the presentation, I thought, oh my goodness, this is every photographer's dream. They're going to be using pieces of this for backdrops and filters for things. So it's very engaging for, if you were to just glance at it, you might not know all the details that are in there. So I love how thoughtful it is. The LED lights that are changing, is that in the number for Station 42 that we're talking about?
And potentially 45.
And 45, so what piece would be going away if we were to put, because I like the unification of 45, but I'm wondering how much we would lose, including 45, how much of this art would we lose for?
For 42?
For 42.
It would be that, in the presentation, the last slide that I showed, it would be the central wood block, which has LED lighting in the red vertical slots.
But that's not the piece that changes color, like if there's a fire call?
No, that would be, yeah, no, that's the 42, the big number four and two, that would have the LED lighting, and that would change and potentially light when there is a signal. So if there was an alarm, the light, the big large number 42 that's on that building would activate. And we would be doing that for both Fire Station 42, as well as Fire Station 45.
Okay, so now I have a question, because I have kind of an emotional attachment to 42, because I can see it from my house. And when there's special events and holidays, they change the colors. Like when the Seahawks went to the playoffs, Seahawks colors, it was great. So is that a piece that we're talking about keeping in the LED? Or is it just strictly lights on, lights off, kind of get your attention, light changing? What are we talking about when the lights change?
Well, that's a great question, we're still having that conversation. We're trying to determine whether the 42 would always be lit, or if it would only be lit at night. And then, of course, we would want it to activate and signal that alarm. So whether it would pulse, or whether it would change a different, from whatever the current color is, we haven't yet been able to determine.
Okay, okay. Then I guess the last question that I have is, you had the architect as part of this conversation. So did you flush out if things needed to be maintained on that, how that would happen? So you have in mind that all, if you know, if something short circuits, you can go take?
Yes, those are part of the conversations that we're also having right now, so an excellent question. We want to make sure that, you know, LED lights can last for up to 20 years, but at some time, they will die, and we will have to go in and be able to to change those out and add new lights. So we are having conversations right now about that, and how we can be sure that it can be done 20 years from now.
Well, I have to tell you, we have this conversation at our house of LED lights. We thought this light bulb was going to last 20 years, and why did it only last a couple of years? So I know LEDs can be a little, not always live up to their promise, so that's why I asked the question. Thank you, I really love this project.
Thank you, Jean.
All right, I am not seeing anymore, Councilmember Agnew.
I recommend that we approve the Bothell Arts Commission selection of artist John Fleming for the conceptual artwork design related to rebuild of Fire Stations 42 and 45 in the amount of $68,000, and acknowledge foregoing the collection of permit fees associated with the art installation.
Deputy Mayor Zorn. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew for the recommended action, and a second by Deputy Mayor Zorn, any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yea or nay when I state your name, Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McCollis.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil. Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Dorr.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Thank you, passes 7-0.
Great, thank you, everyone, thank you, Danae.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to AB 20-144, Consideration of the Bothell 2021-2022 Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual. So I'll be looking for, there she is, Assistant City Manager Kelly Mizoli.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kelly Mizoli, Assistant City Manager. This evening for you, Shelley Helder and I, there she is, I was looking to see if she was on the call, are presenting your 2021 to 2022 Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual. As you are aware, these two documents help guide the city's interest in the upcoming 2021 Washington State Legislative Session. I'm going to turn it over here to Ms. Helder, so that she can talk to us about more of the specifics, and then we will hear from Council.
Well, thank you, Kelly, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Shelley Helder, your Government Affairs Consultant at Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs. It is good to be with you this evening, even if it is virtually, it's good to see your faces. And so as Kelly said, this evening, I'm going to begin talking about what we expect for the upcoming legislative session, some tips on developing your legislative agenda. I'm going to review the city's draft legislative priorities, and then hopefully get some feedback from you all on the priorities that are being presented. So hopefully you can all see my screen, if you can't, let me know, otherwise I'm gonna keep going for them. Make sure that we use all of our time wisely. So I'm going to start by providing some background information on the upcoming session. Over the last several months, I'm sure you've heard the rumors about a potential special session, and particularly for the state to address the budget shortfall as a result of COVID-19. With the release of the September revenue forecast, however, it's looking less and less likely like a potential session, like a potential session, potential special session would occur. I would say it's probably unlikely at this point, since the September revenue forecast was slightly better than the previous. With that, means that the next time the legislature will convene will be for the 2021 regular session, starting on January 11. It'll be a long session, lasting 105 days, and it'll be the first year of the biennium. So the legislature's primary goal will be to adopt new budgets. There are ongoing discussions about the format of the upcoming session, and how to protect the health of legislators and legislative staff, given COVID-19. So far, it sounds like the House is planning to hold all their committee meetings and floor votes virtually. The Senate, since they have half as many members, are planning to hold their committee meetings virtually, but will allow some senators to be there in person for floor votes. And then others would vote virtually, and they would rotate who's there in person. The details are all still in flux, but we are confident that this is going to be a very unique fashion. And the virtual nature is going to make it even more difficult for the legislature to pass complex or controversial policies, especially those that haven't been well-worked in advance of the session. And although the election results are not yet certified, we can confidently say Democrats are going to maintain the majority in both the House and the Senate. That was never a question this election, but what was in question was how broad the majorities were going to be. Where things stand right now, it looks like the split in the House and the Senate is going to stay the same. So that's 27 Democrats and 22 Republicans in the Senate, 57 Democrats and 41 Republicans in the House. There are a couple races that are really close, that will likely go to recount, that could change that. In both chambers, each party lost a seat and picked up a seat. So that's why it looks like the numbers are going to stay the same. Taking into account open seats and incumbent losses, there will be at least five new senators and 17 new representatives. And then, so the focus of the 2021 session is going to be on addressing the shortfall that exists in the current operating and transportation budgets, and then adopting three new biennial budgets. They'll be really limited capacity to tackle policy issues, but we do expect to see dozens of bills related to police reform, some proposals to address housing and rental assistance for when the eviction moratorium ends, and definitely efforts to bring about more racial equity. So before we dive into the city's priorities, I thought it would be helpful to just have a quick refresher on each of the state's budgets. So as a reminder, the state adopts three biennial budgets, you have the operating, the capital, and the transportation. The current budgets expire on June 30 of 2021, and the new budgets will begin July 1 of 2021. The operating budget funds operations of all state agencies, and it's the budget that you'll most often hear referred to in the news. It's the largest of the three state budgets. As I mentioned, based on the September revenue forecast, the operating budget has a short the operating budget has a shortfall of roughly four billion dollars. Um, and that's over the next four years. One of the reasons, um, that there's been some resistance to a special session is the prospect of federal assistance and not wanting to make any drastic changes before knowing what type of relief may come from the federal government. Um, we have heard from budget writers and, and many Democrat legislators that the budget solutions from the recession of a purely cuts approach, um, are not gonna work this time around. And there's a growing desire to identify new revenue. Uh, some of the revenue sources that are being considered are a capital gains tax and, and expansion of sin taxes such as marijuana and liquor tax. The capital budget is the smallest of the three budgets. It funds public and nonprofit construction projects. It's typically a two and a half to three billion dollar budget and it's funded primarily through the sale of bonds. Uh, it's the budget where the city previously received, uh, one and a half million dollars for downtown cleanup and a little over one and a half million dollars for the bridge at Bothell Landing. The capital budget will be the budget with the most opportunity for securing direct appropriations in Twenty Twenty-One. Um, projects that stimulate the economy by being shovel-ready and immediately result in construction jobs or projects that focus on assistance for vulnerable populations will be, um, most competitive. The last of the three budgets is the transportation budget, and it has reduced revenue from a decline in gas tax, ferry ticket sales and toll revenues from the pandemic. I'm, I'm sure you've all heard that the Supreme Court rules Initiative nine seven six unconstitutional. So the funds that were previously set aside by the state are now able to be used. Unfortunately, the decline in tax revenue from COVID is greater than the revenues that were frozen from nine seven six. So there is still a shortfall in the current transportation budget. Um, additionally, there is a recognition from both sides of the aisle that the legislature needs to do something to address car tabs or at a minimum, the valuation system that's used to determine car tabs in the Sound Transit Region. Um, I have heard though from, um, the Chair of the House Transportation Committee, Representative Jake Fai. Um, I've heard him say that he does not intend to make changes that impact local car tab fees, which I know Bothell does not currently have, but many other cities do, and that's been concerning for some jurisdictions. Um, even before there was a shortfall in the transportation budget, um, back during the Twenty Nineteen Session, discussions began about a new revenue package and they've been continuing over the last year, almost two years now. Senator Steve Hobbs, Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, has developed a proposal he refers to as Forward Washington. Representative Fai held listening sessions with a variety of stakeholders over the last several months and plans to release his proposal sometime in December. And Senator Saldana, Vice Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, is also developing a proposal. And Senator Curtis King, a ranking member of the Senate Transportation Committee, has said that with the three Democrat proposals out there, he's inclined to develop one as well to ensure that Republican values are included as part of the discussion. In all three of the Democrat proposals, we're confident that climate policy will be a cornerstone. Um, the specifics of what that policy looks like, how much is invested into the transportation system versus other areas, all of that is still being developed and I'm sure will be negotiated, um, throughout the development of a package. Um, but I think it's, it's clear that there is a will, a will for a new package and there's definitely a need for additional transportation investments. Um, I think the biggest challenge of passing a package will be the virtual nature of this upcoming session. So transitioning now into just some reminders for, um, consideration when talking about the city's legislative priorities. The first is to remain focused. Um, we always advise our clients to be focused on just a few priorities, since that increases your chances of success. But that will be even more important this coming session, when the legislature is gonna have limited bandwidth for the issues that they can address. And for some policy issues, um, or for, I guess, for policy issues that the city cares about, but don't rise to the level of being a high priority, we have the policy manual document, which Kelly referenced and I'll review in just a moment. Um, we recommend developing a biennial legislative agenda to align with the state's biennial budget cycle. Um, and then if an item is accomplished in the first year of the biennium, we update the agenda to reflect that. This year in particular, we recommend that the city's priorities focus on capital and transportation requests. Um, not necessarily exclusively, but that's where the focus should be. As I mentioned earlier, the capital budget is the budget with the most opportunity. It doesn't necessarily mean that a funding request would be guaranteed. It still has to be the right project and it has to compete well, but it's the only budget not facing a shortfall. Um, and even though the transportation budget has a shortfall, because the legislature is considering a revenue package, um, we recommend including the city's top transportation priorities. And the transportation projects that are competitive at a state level are those that are on or directly connected to an interstate or state highway. And it's important to be wise with the city's political capital or in other words, to prioritize issues that have the greatest impact to the city. Uh, and then lastly, it's good to have consistency with previous legislative agendas, since oftentimes it takes several years to accomplish a priority. Um, and it's important for legislators to know that the issue remains a priority for the city. So with all of that in mind, let's transition to reviewing the city's draft priorities for the upcoming biennium. A copy of the city's draft legislative agenda is included in your council packet. So the first item on the agenda is a request for seven million dollars for the widening of Bothell Way Northeast from, uh, Reader Way to Two Hundred and Forty-oth Street Southeast. So the city has already secured most of the design and right-of-way acquisition costs, um, through grants and other sources. So the seven million dollars would go towards the construction phase. The design of the project is scheduled to begin in Twenty Twenty-One and the construction is planned for the Twenty Five, Twenty Seven Biennium. And typically, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to ask for construction funding that we don't need for another two biennia. But the way that the state schedules out funding when it develops a transportation package uh, means that now is the appropriate time to ask for funding that will need in Twenty Twenty-Five. Um, the widening of this road, I'm sure as many of you know, is critical to extend community transit's rapid ride into downtown Bothell and also the Udaah Bothell and Cascadia College Campus. And I, I wanna be frank that securing this funding is not gonna be possible unless the legislature passes a transportation package. Um, so if it doesn't happen in Twenty Twenty-One, it may happen in, in the following year or the year after. Um, but even if a package is adopted, it's, it's gonna be challenging to secure this funding for, for two reasons in particular. The first is that the city's transportation priority at the state level has been critical investments on four oh five. Um, and that's been our priority for several years and that, that impacts our ability to elevate other projects like this one. Um, and I'll just say that focus was necessary in order to ensure that the four oh five improvements were prioritized. Um, but it means that this project may not be as well-known outside of our local delegation. Um, and it'll be new to many legislators. And then secondly, um, we'll need to make the case, and I, I think we can, that this is a regional connector that will benefit much more than just the Bothell community. Um, without an explanation and an emphasis of why this will benefit the region, it's less likely that the state will see this as a priority investment for the limited funding that will be available in a new package. So the second priority, um, is a capital budget request for six hundred thousand dollars for the North Creek Regional Trail. Um, again, with this project, the city has been really diligent in seeking other grant funding for the design and acquisition base. So this funding would go towards construction. Um, and having a capital budget project that goes towards construction will help the project compete better at the state level. This is the section of the trail that runs along State Route five two four between Filbert and her ninth and roughly five two seven. Um, when completed, this will be a multimodal transportation facility that will improve safety for bicyclists and pedestrians and encourage non-motorized travel. The North Creek Trail connects to the Interurban Trail at McCollum Park in Everett and of course to the Smamish or Burt Gilman Trail here in Bothell, um, or there in Bothell. So completing this missing link will, will really enhance our regional trail system. Um, the last two items on the draft legislative agenda are, um, requests to support specific grant programs, uh, that the state currently offers and have the potential to benefit the city. The first is a support for, uh, a robust funding for the regional mobility grant program, which is funded through the state's transportation budget. It's a grant program that supports local efforts to improve connectivity between counties and regional population centers. The types of projects that it typically funds are new transit services, park and ride lots, new buses, um, and transportation demand management programs. And we would support a robust state investment in this grant program because the city is preparing to develop a transportation demand management program for Canyon Park. Um, city staff has estimated that developing that program will cost, uh, roughly two hundred thousand dollars per year for the first three years, just to get the program established. Um, the city would have to apply and compete for a ranking to be awarded a grant through this program. So the greater the size of the grant program, the greater are chances of securing funding. And just to give you a sense of the size of this program, in the last biennial budget, the grant program was allocated roughly a hundred million dollars and funded fifty projects throughout the state, ranging in size from a hundred and sixty thousand all the way up to ten million dollars. And so, I mean, that, that sounds like a pretty robust grant program. Um, but we just wanna keep in mind that the city would be competing for funds against, um, every transit agency and local jurisdiction in the state that applies. So, um, and I think just given the way that the grant program is structured, transit agencies tend to receive the vast majority of the funds. Um, and then last to mention on this topic, given the timing of the grant cycle, um, we do anticipate that this would be a multi-year request. And then the final priority is also supporting a state-funded grant program. And this one is through the Department of Ecology. It is the Remedial Action Grant Program. And it's the source of many of the grants that the city has received for cleanup of contaminated sites, um, within downtown Bothell. This is a request that we've had on the agenda for a few years now. Um, but it remains a high priority for the city. So, um, it's important to keep it on legislators' radar. We don't have a, uh, request for a specific project, but a larger investment in the grant program will increase the availability of funds for the city to receive additional grants as needed. So as I mentioned earlier, in addition to the legislative agenda, we also have a policy manual that outlines the city's position on a variety of, uh, policy issues. And those are issues that frequently arise during a legislative session. So this document helps me, as the city's lobbyist, weigh in on proposed legislation that has a potential negative or positive impact on the city. It also helps our legislative delegation know which issues, in addition to the high priorities, um, are, are going to impact the city. So for the sake of time this evening, I'm not gonna go over all of the changes to the document, um, but I do wanna highlight some of the biggest updates. Uh, the first is updated language under the Public Safety Section to address several of the police reform topics that we expect will be discussed this coming session. Um, many of these statements are borrowed from and are in alignment with the Association of Washington Cities and the Washington State Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, um, their policy statements on police reform. We also included a statement highlighting the importance of ongoing funding for, uh, the radar program. The second update, um, I wanna highlight is regarding the implementation of I four oh five improvements. As you'll recall, during the Twenty Nineteen Session, the legislature made a commitment to fund improvements on four oh five. Um, specifically from State Route five two two to five two seven was what the city of Bothell had prioritized. Um, their plan for how to pay for those improvements was through the bonding of toll revenue. However, with the decline in toll revenue due to the pandemic, um, it's an uncertain time to bond and there's potential that those projects could be delayed. So we're urging the legislature to, um, look at alternative fund sources if the current fund sources are, are not able to keep the projects on schedule. Uh, we also added a statement to support policies and funding that provide greater access and equity for broadband services. Um, we know that this is gonna be an important topic for the legislature this coming session. And then the last update that I'll mention is a statement to highlight the fact that cities will need support from the state, either through tools or direct funding to ensure that city-owned utilities are not left carrying the bag from the cost or from the overdue utility bills during the pandemic. And many legislators don't realize that the city cannot just absorb these costs. Um, if there's a shortfall, the cost has to be spread out among other ratepayers. Um, so I think, you know, one thing to highlight is we're not, we're not saying that we wanna go after customers who can't afford to pay their bills, just that we need the resources to be able to cover the costs of providing those services. So that was a lot of information. Um, now I'd like to open it up for questions and, and feedback from you all. I specifically, we're interested to know if these priorities are, are clear, if they're correct. Um, and if there's any items that are missing from the policy manual. Our hope is that we'll, um, get your approval of these documents this evening. But if there's, um, through the discussion, if we realize there's, you know, a need to make substantial changes, then we can bring them back at a future meeting. Um, but one of the reasons we're eager to finalize the city's priorities is because we'd like to, um, schedule a meeting with our first district legislators prior to the start of session. And the goal, um, would be to have that meeting sometime in December, since session begins the second Monday of January. Um, and we all know that, um, the end of the year busyness can quickly eat up a lot of time in December. So with that, I'm gonna stop and see if there are any questions or comments.
All right, anyone have any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I was really hoping that other people would leap in before, before me because, because I have no, uh, I have no suggestions on how this ought to change. Shelley, this all looks like, you know, I can tell you've worked with staff and have really, um, brought together the most really important things that we need to address, winnow down, uh, things that we need to address. I do have a, a question as a matter of curiosity, because I am hearing from people from all ends of political spectrum concerned about, um, the level of mental health and drug addiction support that we have and it needs to come from the state level. And I'm not, I'm not asking you to put that on, 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 uh, what we've got going on here. But I guess my question is, is I, is, we sit and start to noodle this, is do, does Gordon Thomas work with other cities here at the North End?
Yes, we do. We also work with, uh, City of Kenmore and Lake Forest Park.
Oh, so in theory, if we, a year or two down the road, wanted to form a regional group to take an issue to get down to Olympia and petition and ask for funding from, you know, capital funding to build at this end meaningful mental and drug addiction, uh, centers. Um, in theory, we could do that and link arms with, um, other cities on that?
Definitely, yeah. And I would suggest that if, if that issue does rise to the level of, um, you know, the city wanting to engage that it do, that it, that it is a regional issue, because we all know that, you know, people don't pay as much attention to the, the city boundaries as we do. Um, but I think in addition to a, a, a capital budget request, um, on this topic in particular, I think everyone knows that it's much more than just having a building there. It's also having the appropriate staff.
The appropriate staff. And I know that there is, there has been a shortfall in mental health counselors in our state. And so one of the investments that the state made just recently is in additional training. And education in order to kind of grow more mental health counselors within our state and address the the shortfall in. Personnel. So it it is a multifaceted issue. So I guess I just offer that for consideration.
No, 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 that's a good point, because that that thought goes through my head is that we need to get our house in order, so to speak, before we go and build the house. So it's not just one piece to have effective mental health and drug therapies. It's not just the building, it's what's what we've, the framework we've set up that goes on inside that building. So yes, no. I agree with you on that. So that was my only question. I I have no tweakings or modifications on this. And I'll just be looking for our December conversation with the legislators. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, if I might also point out to you that we do have. In your policy manual, there is a bullet that talks about supporting initiatives that help us address those specific types of issues.
I did, I did see that. I did see that. And and as we talk, you know, we've talked about. We're talking about having resources, you know, we're talking about a a court system, we're talking about having a community center. Some of these therapies need long-term, you know, it needs. Heads and beds, but in a different context, you you know what I'm saying? We're talking about somebody who needs to be under 24-hour supervision. So yes, I did see that piece of it. And and I appreciate it being there. So thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Shelley, for the presentation. Definitely look forward to getting into this session and and great news to hear that things are looking much better. Great news coming out of 2020, I guess. I had a couple of questions. You had mentioned vulnerable populations. Ranking higher with grant applications. Can you, can you speak to what that would actually look like?
Yeah, so some communities are partnering with their like local food banks or. Other nonprofit organizations that are providing services. So there, if if there was an appropriate. Service or program that was offered within the city of Bothell that made sense to elevate as a capital budget request. That would be something to consider. And talking with city staff. We, nothing came immediately to our mind. But I think the reason that I highlighted that is because we've been hearing from particularly capital budget leads. That they're really wanting to emphasize projects that are going to immediately result in some type of construction jobs. Or and or projects that help the populations that we all know are hurting the most through the pandemic. I think the the North Creek Regional Trail definitely falls into the first category of being a project that. Can start creating jobs immediately. So that's, that's my thought on on why that project was identified and why I think it's one that could compete well.
Okay, and so when we say capital dollar for vulnerable populations, we're referring to actual. Capital projects, not funding programs like, well, you had mentioned food banks, is that? But what what did that, does that mean a capital project building that food bank? Or what what does that look like?
Correct. Yeah, I I should have clarified that. Thanks for the follow-up. So that would be. Say a community needs to expand their food bank. That would be, you know, building a larger building for the food bank. Capital budget dollars cannot go towards anything operational.
Right, and I think we, I think if memory serves, we had some. Some capital dollars that were spent on our senior center for improvements. And the hearing tonight from the senior center from Brooke, it sounds like they're actually. There's a higher demand for their services out of that, those facilities. Which could potentially be something that could be looked at for grant dollars for capital projects to increase those facilities.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, if the senior center has a a plan for how they would be expanding their. Their building or, you know, expanding their footprint in some way. And they needed additional resources in order to do that, that that could could be a potential capital budget project. I guess my my only caution is that. Anytime we bring forward a capital budget project to the state, we want to make sure that the the project is already really well baked. And that there's not any uncertainty about whether the project can actually be carried forward. In addition, anytime we make a request, say we request $500,000 and we only get. 250,000, we have to be able to deliver a significant portion of the project. If we're going to take advantage of any of that funding. So there there are some kind of constraints on what projects can are are beneficial enough to submit as a capital budget request.
And so that would kind of led into my next question around the community court. Human services type facilities, things like that. But it sounds like we need to get those programs up and running so that the, once we do apply for those grants. It's it's a baked program that's already up and running. So that leads into the radar navigator program. What do we, how is that ranking right now? It's a top priority, especially here on the North End. Is there work that we need to do as council members to go? Ensure that our legislators up in Olympia know that how important this is, or is it something that everybody's already noticing?
Yeah, so the the radar program has been talked about as kind of a really great example of. Cities joining together to address a regional problem. The reason we included it in the the policy manual and included the language somewhat broadly is. As I understood it most recently, the King County Council was still considering whether or not the funding that they. Contribute to the program is going to be available or not. If it's not, then there's going to be an even greater need. We already know that the state is going to be looking at how to invest in more programs like the radar program. But their focus is going to be on creating new programs in areas where they don't exist already. So really, our message is, you know, we've, we've been leaders, we've done our diligence, we've created these this program, but. We really need the state's assistance to keep it going successfully. And so I think part of the challenge for the state will be identifying a source of funds for these programs. That need to operate not just from grant dollars, because you can't hire staff with grant dollars, not knowing if you're going to ever. Get additional funding in the next biennium. So I think that's really the message behind the request for the radar program is sustainable state dollars for that type of program.
And then on the transportation project, the Bothell Everett Highway projects. Spoke about the regional connection there and how that operates with between our growth center downtown Bothell. I think that the message around that is it's it's much bigger than just the. Connection between our downtown Bothell and Canyon Park Growth Center. It's actually a connection from all the ways far north as Everett. All the way to, I would consider it Bellevue and Seattle in some cases, because. The growth on the north end of the city that we're seeing, many of those people. Are going to be taking transit from the north down through the south. And what's interesting is the dynamic of 405 to I-5. Could potentially change for head times, for lead, you know, for how long it takes you to go from 522 to Seattle. Versus 405 to Seattle and how that looks with those connections. So. I'm interested in in hearing more about how that ranking, how we would rank on that. I think it was a $7 million. Request, if I'm not mistaken. I'd be curious to see how we're ranking on that, because I think that that project and that connection. Were the, were the start and the end of of everything here on the North End, pretty much, that hub. So. I'd be, I'd be curious to to hear more about that and how we can make sure our voices are heard.
Yeah, I think, I think for that request, I'll just note that because the transportation. There are, as I mentioned, four different transportation revenue packages being developed. And not every package is going to have a project list on it. The Senator Hobbs' proposal Forward, Washington, and since it was released back in 2019, it has a list of projects on it. But they're not all projects that are the current priority for legislators around the state. And then I know Representative Phi is, he's the one that's planning to release his project and revenue package in December. I I know that this project was mentioned to him. I don't know if it's going to be included on the list or not, but I think that's. I mean, this is why we've identified it as a priority. We want to make sure that. At a minimum, our first district legislators know that it's a priority for the city. And then beyond that, all the other legislators in the region.
Yeah, is it, is it one of the only places where you have all the, you have sound, community, metro, all kind of coming together?
I mean, there may be other areas, but I I don't know what they are.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty cool to have that right here. And then the, obviously, the Department of Ecology, critical, critical. For our downtown, our final downtown cleanups and in allowing us to get our properties sold. So. The funding for that, ensuring that that continues to come through from the Department of Ecology, high, high priority. And then I guess the last thing I would leave with is. Sometimes I recall where we have specific, our legislators have specific. Dollars that are allotted to them. For our communities. And I know that Senator Stanford has has helped in the past with. allocations of funds for specific projects here at home. I'm hoping we can identify some of those things, especially right now. Hearing from many folks within our community on human services and the needs for DEIs and. And ensuring that we're, we have that sense of community and 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 the tax dollars that we're paying are actually coming back. To our community. And I know Bothell has, since I've been on council, has done a fabulous job of going up and lobbying and. Ensuring those dollars are coming back to our community. But opportunity funds are something that I think we should really be focused on as well as a council. It's finding the opportunities within our own legislators to be able to get some of those dollars here to help. For some of those vulnerable populations within the the community, so.
Yeah, and I mean, you mentioned the appropriations that former Senator. Stan, or I guess Senator Stanford has been able to secure. A lot of those have been the requests that, you know, the city has prioritized. So last session, we prioritized a request for. Funds for the bridge at Bothell Landing. The session before that, we included a request for specific downtown cleanup site. I mean, those, our legislators really go to bat for the issues that, as a city council, you all have said are 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 top priorities. So I think our our delegation in particular really appreciates the input from the council. And, you know, take seriously the items that you all prioritize.
I appreciate, I appreciate all the hard work that you do for us throughout the region in Olympia. You know, with today's times, it's all about working together, finding, finding common ground and. Ensuring that we are doing the work of the people. So I just wanted to say thank you as well. Your hard work.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shelley, for the presentation. I I think the kind of four priorities you identified are are right on, are really good. I I'm never going to complain when there's a. You know, bike and pedestrian pass in there as well. I I had just just a couple of questions. You know, in the widening of Bothell way, obviously, it's going to be really competitive to get funding for that, especially this year. If we were willing to plan for adding bus lanes, adding bus-only lanes, would that change our ability to? Secure funding at all, since it would be supporting transit more directly?
I mean, I think. One of the reasons that that project is competitive in the first place is because it is a project that's going to support transit. I would say without that component, it would not compete nearly as well. If it was simply a widening of a. You know, city arterial. I don't know that I would have even recommended that it be prioritized as a a project that the state would consider for funding. So I think it's the nexus with the. With the expansion of the bus transit service that makes it a competitive project.
But no, no difference in terms of if we're willing to commit to bus lanes as compared to general purpose lanes?
I mean, I don't know that there would be any, I mean. I guess I I don't know if that commitment would make a difference. I think if we know that the the plan is to do that, then that's helpful.
I I also just had a question on a couple of things that I found in here that I was talking that. I had, I took issue with frankly. One of them is, you know, we call for local control over law enforcement decisions. And and I saw that there's a a good list of exceptions in state action we would support. I'm just concerned about the. Appearance of the city in this time with everything that's gone on around, you know, law enforcement and racial justice this year. Appearing to be against the state taking action that would make positive change.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a valid concern. I think the specifically the language that speaks to local control is language that the Association of Washington Cities also used in their legislative agenda. And I think really it's a, it's a city value that that cities have been. Given authority to manage certain tasks of government at the local level. And law enforcement is one of them. And so with a recognition that there does need to be state action taken. I think that needs to be balanced with the fact that. Communities are different. And that, that to some level, there needs to be some accountability at the, at the local level for local city councils to make those decisions. And I think particularly to go. In many cases above what the state decides is appropriate statewide. So I think, I mean, the language in there is intended to be a balanced approach. And I don't know if that. You know, there's ways that we can tweak it to have it reflect that.
No, and and I definitely noticed that, and I appreciated the list of things that we would support, and it did seem balanced. And I think it's very defendable. It's just. I'm not sure what we're worried about passing with the list of like, here are the eight things that we would support from a state level. The, I'm, I'm always a little concerned when we talk about local control. Because whenever you're talking about who gets to make the decision, you're not talking about what the right decision is. So that's, that's always going to raise my hackles just a little bit. And. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I'm looking at. The legislation referring to law enforcement, what I'm seeing is that there at, there is a request. To support legislation to change the amount of time a newly hired officer has to attend the academy. From six months to two months. I'm a little concerned. Why is that an issue? Because. Seems to me that we want more training and more involvement with the Law Enforcement Academy, but could you speak to that, please?
Of course, yeah, I appreciate the question. So under current law, when a new law enforcement officer is hired. The statute says that they have up to six months to attend the academy for training. What that means is. Oftentimes, they take the maximum statutory length of six months in order to get into the academy, because there are long wait times. And so the CJTC, in working with many jurisdictions around the state. Has identified that that statute is often a kind of a back backdrop for the legislature to. Not adequately fund the basic law enforcement academy. And so the the wait times that. End up occurring as a result, mean that it does take up to the maximum of six months. So the thought with changing the law to two months is that it would force the legislature to. Fund the appropriate level of classes in order to make sure that a wait time is no more than two months. So the intent is not to change the length of the training, it's to ensure that law enforcement officers receive that training. Sooner rather than later. You're still muted. You're still muted. Councilmember McAuliffe. Now we can hear you.
Okay, so I just want to be sure that this does not. Kind of compromise the training itself, that we still have officers trained with all the skills they need to be out there.
That's correct.
And then the second one is really important to me is the ongoing state funding for the radar program. I see that here and that's really important because that is really what addresses our community. When we have mental health issues or people that need to come before the police come or with them. So I strongly support that. I hope you can see that as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, Shelley. I'll just say that. I too believe that, you know, our top priorities are essential to the success of our city continue to being. Successful with our, getting our projects constructed, moving forward with our downtown cleanup. And just so many of our other priorities. So, you know, if we, if we get one of them, I'd be doing backflips. Just with uncertain times here. So, you know, if, if we have some of the previous. Type success, that'd be, that'd be amazing. You and your team do a great job. You know, hopefully, we have some opportunity how we have in the past to go down and speak. With our legislators in person and make a more dramatic impact to them. But. If we need to do these virtual meetings, I think, you know, I'll, I'll definitely take that as the second option, Plan B. Just you impress on how important these are and. How hopeful it is to have their support during the legislative seat session. So I didn't really hear any. Concerns or modifications from anyone, so. I'd say we are looking for some sort of motion to approve it. So Councilmember Agnew.
I move the recommended action.
And I second that.
All right, Councilmember McAuliffe, very on top of it there. Appreciate if you wait for me next time, but. So we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to move for the recommended action, which is. To approve the proposed City of Bothell 2021, 2022 Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual. And a second by Rosemary, Councilmember McAuliffe. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yea or nay when I state your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yay.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yay.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yay.
Mayor Olson.
Yay.
Councilmember Dorr.
Yay.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yay.
This is seven zero.
Great, thank you, everyone. Let's take a seven minute break and then we'll come back with Director Bothwell. And discuss our budget forecast update, AB twenty dash one four five. So we'll let him have a couple of minutes to get on top. So, so we'll come back at eight twenty, six minutes. All right, welcome back. We are on to AB twenty dash one four five, a budget forecast. Update. So we have our Finance Director, Chris Bothwell, here with us. So I'll turn it over to you.
I just have a number of, a few updates to the budget. I can advance my slide. Okay, so I'm going to start with the revenue forecast updates. During budget development, we continuously monitor and update the revenue forecast. Once we issue the preliminary budget, we pause the updates, but we continue the monitoring. So I'm just going to share with you the updates that we have since the preliminary budget. And they're relatively minor, so I'm going to get through them really quickly. First is a sales tax. We've increased the forecast by three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. And that's the result of strong sales tax performance during the pandemic. Property tax, specifically new construction, we are reducing our forecast by four hundred thousand dollars for the biennium. It's split evenly two hundred thousand dollars in each of the two years. And that is in response to preliminary numbers coming out of the county for new construction. And the final one is utility tax. We're adjusting that forecast down by a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. And that's the result of the expected continued low consumption from our commercial customers. So this table just shows the general fund operating deficit by year before and after this adjustment. So you can see in twenty twenty one, the adjustments net, so we have a positive adjustment for sales tax and a couple of negative adjustments. So there is no change there. The general fund operating deficit continues to stay under a million dollars in the first year of the budget. You can see in twenty twenty two, it increases by two hundred thousand dollars. At this point, we're not recommending that we actually update the budget with the twenty twenty two numbers. And the reason is that we've got. A pretty significant mid-biennial budget review and adjustment scheduled for twenty twenty one. And we're going to have better data then. So it makes a lot of sense to wait on that adjustment until the mid-by. So, got two other kind of random matters to share with you, budget-related updates. The first one is the revenue capacity update. So during the pre-budget workshops, you may recall that I. Presented a revenue capacity analysis where I showed you all the places the city could raise additional money if it needed to or wanted to. And one of the opportunities that was excluded from that was the car tab fee. And the reason is, is that Initiative nine seventy six had been approved by voters and that eliminated the option for a local government to have a car tab fee. But the courts have since invalidated I nine seventy six. So the car tab fee is actually a viable option for us. So what the, just really quickly, the summary of what that opportunity is, is the city could councilmanically impose a car tab fee of up to forty dollars a year. On vehicles registered in the city. Just councilmanically. So the, the council could vote to do that and it would raise revenue for transportation purposes. Pretty simple. So the purpose of this is just to update you that that is a viable option. If you'd like more information, just let me know. And this is more of a housekeeping item. It's also my final item. The annual property tax increase. Is actually limited to the lower of one percent or inflation. We do have our inflation numbers for the twenty twenty one levy now. And it's less than one percent, it's point six percent. So we do need to pass an ordinance of significant need. In order to take the full one percent for the twenty twenty one property tax levy, the one percent is assumed in the budget. So. This is just a heads up that your packet next week where you'll be considering. The adoption of a property tax levy will have an additional piece of legislation with it and that will, that is the ordinance of significant need. If you pass that, we can take the full one percent. If the council does not pass that, we'll be limited to inflation, which is point six percent. So. That's the end of your updates. As always, I welcome any questions.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Bothwell. I had a question regarding the sales tax. So my understanding was that. Tell me if I'm, I'm wrong and I have the wrong impression, but was that the sales tax increase was partially due to. Amazon sales and the fact that those, that sales tax is revenue that we don't normally see, but because the increase of Amazon sales. That made kind of a difference because we have such a small kind of sales tax base in Bothell. Is that true?
Yeah, I think that is right. It's the retail trade category, which I think is, should be getting most of our large online retailers. That's holding up really, really well in the pandemic and is offsetting some of the losses that we're seeing in other industries like construction and hospitality. So yeah, we, we, we haven't attributed it to specifically to online sales, but it, it's a logical conclusion to come to that that's where it's coming from.
So my concern would be that we anticipate that to continue in twenty twenty two if, I mean. I, I guess what I'm seeing is the, the outside kind of prediction is that the, the. Things won't be back to normal through most of twenty twenty one, but presuming that that's the case. And things get back to normal in twenty twenty two, I guess I wonder if it's fiscally responsible to assume that that kind of boost in sales tax. Remains in twenty twenty two. And I just wondered, I know you said we have an update, but it seems. Considering our, our fiscal situation, it would seem prudent to maybe just think about whether we want to make those assumptions.
Great point. I think one of the things I'll just mention, because I'm not sure that we. That the revenue forecast has been presented in detail recently. We are forecasting decreasing sales tax in twenty one and then in twenty two, we're forecasting it to resume at two thousand nineteen levels. So that means basically all industries will come back to two thousand nineteen levels. And/or we'll have an offset for things like sales tax leakage that we're not leaking anymore, you know, due to online sales and people staying home and that kind of thing. That those will offset any losses in hospitality and, and construction that continue. But. I mean, yeah.
No, I, I think I understand. So what, what, the number really indicates is that we're not seeing. As much of a loss in sales tax revenue as we assumed, not that we're actually seeing an increase in sales tax revenue. Is that?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so I had it wrong. Okay. All right, thank you. That's very helpful.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you. Great presentation, Chris. The car tab fees, is there, do we have any idea how much we could. Generate, how much revenue we could generate with those car tab fees?
So that's a great question. We don't have great data as of right now, what that would look like. I can give you kind of an anecdotal, I think. Based on the relative size of our population. So it's based on the number of vehicles registered in your city. And you can set it at, usually they're twenty or forty dollars is the council manic option. You can go up to a hundred dollars if you take it to the people for a vote. The, just based on the size of our population compared to the, the city I came from that had a TBD. I'm thinking it's probably a five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollar a year. Years of, amount of revenue that we get annually from, from those fees. And that would be at the forty dollar level.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I'll jump in. Councilmember Agnew kind of prompted a thought in my head and. I won't guess that you might know this, but I'll, I'll ask it anyways. Just with the sentiment of car tabs fees and what was happening with I nine seven six. I mean, is there any discussion on the stability of this fund? And what it might be and, and partly what we heard from Shelley. With discussions that it might be at a state level item as well.
So. That is a really great question. The. You know, I, it would probably be better posed to Paul as he's probably familiar with what the courts, what the challenge was. I, my understanding of it is that they felt like voters were maybe misled or weren't exactly. They weren't clear on what the legislation was actually going to do. If that's the case, I don't see any reason that somebody couldn't bend, it couldn't go back on a ballot, which would cause a problem. Just from a, purely from a practical standpoint. If it goes away, if you, you know, it depends on what you're using it for. We wouldn't want, I don't think at this point we'd want to bond, you know, a, a project. Against those revenues. But Paul probably has a more intelligent answer to whether or not there's.
Don't say that. I mean, that's never good. No, but essentially the crux of it was, is that the ballot, the title of the ballot measure has to match the contents. And because it was billed as a thirty dollar card tab, because the. And because it was billed as a $30 car tab, because the car tabs actually fluctuated above that, that's why it was unconstitutional. That is a very, very basic explanation. Please don't send me comments for anyone watching. That's the crux of it.
All right. Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Well, I have to be honest that these taxes that we're talking about are people who are, it's hitting people, residents who are already paying a pretty heavy tax load. And, and it gives me pause. And so I'm not telling you my mind is made up in any way, shape or form. I just, I just want to ask, are these taxes that we're talking about kind of the low-hanging fruit? The easy taxes to address? Because we're not talking about, and, and again, I don't want anybody hitting the panic button, but I don't see any kind of B and O tax discussion or head tax discussion on ways to help our city revenues. So are these the easy taxes that we can be talking about that we could affect?
So I think that the, it's a great question because it gives some context to the discussion. The, the reason that it's being presented is because the revenue capacity report, you may recall it presented all the city's options to increase revenues. It wasn't, it was kind of agnostic. It didn't, it didn't say we should do anything. It was just, here's all the levers you could pull if you wanted to raise more revenue. And that report is outdated based on this court case that invalidated I-976. And so that's why it's, that's why I'm bringing it to you is because it's, there's an update that is, you know, meaningful in terms of if you did want to raise additional revenue for, and this one happens to be for a specific purpose, then that report is now incomplete or outdated. And so this is not, we're, it's not in the budget. We're not assuming this is happening. This is, it was just a matter of wanting to make sure that you had all the information about all your options. But it's not, at this point, it's not in the budget. It's not, we're not, we're not moving any legislation to make it happen. To your point about, is it easy? Yeah, it's fairly easy to implement. It's, I think it takes about 90 days. You do it through, you know, the council, council would adopt it. We get all the legislation together, council could adopt it, and then we just basically send that off to Department of Revenue, who sends it to licensing and they implement it. It's fairly simple. But, but that wasn't the purpose of bringing it up. We just wanted to make sure you had all the information.
Well, I was also, I was also referencing the property tax increases. Do we do the, what did you say, 6% or the full 1%? So I mean, my question was kind of broad there, but, but thank you for the clarification on the card tabs.
I missed that part. Yeah. In terms of the property tax increase, you know, in most years inflation is higher than the 1%. We don't get any of that gap. This year it happens to be lower. Our budget assumes the 1%. And to your point about, is it easy? Yeah, it's just an extra piece of legislation that you have to pass.
Okay, that ma, that makes sense. I understand better. Thank you.
All right. I am not seeing anyone else with questions or comments for you, Director Bothwell. So thank you very much for your presentation and the information. You are making us smarter every day.
Thank you all.
All right. So we have a couple items left on the agenda. We have our council conversations and then we have some executive session and closed session. So, you know, it looks like it's set up, and I agree with this, that we have the council conversations on Zoom here, and then we'll be moving over to a separate closed virtual meeting after that. So, on to council conversations. Anyone have some topics? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I just wanted to say how excited I am to see everybody's face out here. Everybody's smiling, hopefully. What an amazing 2020 year we've had. I just wanted to kind of speak to the fact that tomorrow is a big day for, for us to honor our veterans and, and the sacrifices they make for our country. And, and thinking about them, I think about some of the sacrifices we as council members make and our families make and elected leaders make around this country to do the good work of the people. And I bring this up because in this toxic climate that we have, we have each other and we sit here and we legislate together. And the decisions we make are decisions that we make as a body of, of seven. And the things that we say and do out within our community are a reflection of who we are as a, as a council. And I love my community. I love working with each and every one of you. And I look forward to 2021 being better than 2020. And what I mean by that is I'm hoping when we turn that corner in January, we're all going to be going down a road of uniting this country in a positive way. Not for us, but for future generations. Because we owe it to them to leave it better than we got it. And we owe it to not only our families, but our community to do the job that we were elected to do and to do it in a positive, non-toxic way. And so we've heard some things and seen some things recently within our community. And I'm hoping we can all stand together as a body of seven and right a wrong within our community and make sure that our community understands that we are here to work together as a body of seven and not be divided, not be the national news that we see, not say things or do things that are going to lead people to believe that we are something that we're not or as individuals. So I just want to say I'm happy. I'm in a good place. I've, I've, you know, Councilmember Agnew knows that I've been going through a lot physically. I've had some medical issues recently. I lost my father-in-law recently. I've been going through a lot, but I've had a lot of time to sit back and, and just take some time. I've taken a little bit of time away from committees with the support of SCA to allow me to have some time to reflect. I appreciate all of you allowing me to reflect and just get my head right emotionally, physically, mentally, and spend some time with my family and my kids and just understand that why we're here is special. It's an honor to be elected by our community. And to go out and be able to be proud of what we do together and, and for our community to understand that every decision we make, you know, whether we agree or don't agree, it's a decision that we as a body of seven made. And I, and I hope we go out, each and every one of us go out into our community and, and spread the fact that we are working together for the common good of the people of Bothell. Because when we do that, then we're a council. And so I just, I love working with all of you. I just wanted you to know that. We don't oft, often have a chance to talk or collaborate together. Liam and, the mayor and I had an opportunity to just chat for a while. Felt good just to, just to talk to him. You know, Councilmember Agnew and I had a chance. I mean, Gene, Council, Deputy Mayor Zorn, I look forward to just chatting with you and Councilmember McAuliffe and Thompson and Doer. I just want to have conversations with you guys just to get to know each other again. Because the COVID thing has taken a lot away from us. When we're not sitting beside each other, we don't get that human touch. We don't get that feel of what we are really all about. And I know that each one of you, I want to believe with the depth of my heart, that each one of you have the best interest for this community and respect the community, respect the city staff. We don't, might always agree, but respect and we can see what's happening nationally, we got to respect one another. It's important. It's important. We live in this community. You know, nationally, the president can be in another state far, far away. Things can be toxic, but when we're here at home in our community, we're walking down the street, we need to feel the love of one another and know that we got each other's backs. We got our community's backs. The kids can count on us. Our city staff can count on us. And I'm, I'm only saying this because, again, I love working with each and every one of you and I want you to know who I am. I'm willing to put myself out there with each and every one of you to let you know who I am and what I am about. I love my community. I love living here. I'm a proud black man that lives in the city of Bothell. And I'm proud to be raising my family here. So I just, I just wanted to say that because I feel that needed to be said after everything that we've gone through in 2020. So, love you all. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, I'll tell you that. And he touched on what I wanted to bring out, and, and tomorrow's Veterans Day. And it's near and dear to my heart. There's millions of veterans that are out there that serve their country, one way or another. They're not losers, they're not suckers. They're some of the bravest people I've ever met in my life. And I, to have a day to respect and honor them, I'm all for it. So to all the veterans in Bothell, thank you very much for your service.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to spend a moment of giving my appreciation to the people who came before us tonight to talk about the needs of our community when we think about our human services and the, and the needs of people that live in Bothell and how many people they serve. I think what they said tonight was very important for us to hear. And as we move forward, I think the testimony we heard tonight will help us to help our own people and give us good consideration for the needs of the people that live in Bothell. Also, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting out your survey today. Really asking people questions about what we need to do and how they need, what they see as people who are part of Bothell and the commissions and different people. So I appreciate that survey as well. I think that would be helpful moving forward. So I know we can't do everything, as much as we'd love to because we care. But as we move forward, maybe a, a plan of action will help us to move forward in a careful way to serve the people. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything. And then Councilmember McNeil had to talk about how much she enjoyed seeing smiling faces because a man after my own heart. I have to tell you, sometimes I'm sitting here at council and I can, you know, see all your faces. And I, and it's just like one step above reading text. You know, like when you read a text, you're like, how, what kind of tone did they mean that? I'm seeing smiling faces. I can't, I love it. But so anyway, so sometimes like when I'm talking, I'll look at your faces and you all have such grim expressions on your faces. And I'm like, I'm either riveting and they are just concentrating and hanging on every word. Or this is just the nature of having a camera stuck in our face. So anyway, like, like you, Councilmember McNeil, I can't wait till we're back in person because we have lost so, so much not being able to be together. That, that, you know, shoulder to shoulder at the dais really mean, we, we, I, I was not aware of how much we lost, would lose with that until we lost it. So I'm eager to get that back. And Councilmember McAuliffe, yeah, the invisible people here in Bothell, I worry about them. We do have people who speak up, but it's the silent people who are hurting that, that have my heart. And Councilmember Agnew, how do we even start to show respect to our veterans? I, I don't know. I don't know. And I'm sure they know that we're lost, at, lost for words as well. But, but I echo your thanks as well. So, anyway, just wanted to, to throw my amens in there. And I'll let the next person speak because I know somebody's got something they want to say.
Councilmember Thompson.
I didn't have anything to say until Deputy Mayor Zorn said something about getting back in person and not being able to tell like what the expressions mean. Because I, I think I seem angry when I'm not. I had a council member a while ago call me after a meeting and say, are you upset? And I'm like, no, not at all. Did I seem upset? Yeah, you did. So I'm, I'm looking forward to getting back in person too.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone for what they had to say. I particularly wanted to agree with Councilmember McAuliffe. I can't imagine taking away services in this time for people in need. And I, I've been very heartbroken over the possibility of that happening. And so I hope that we can find a way. I don't know how, but I hope that we can find a way because this is not a personal plea for myself. This is not a pet project. There are people who are really in need, that are food insecure, housing insecure, and they don't have a lot of options. And as tough as this year has been for me, I've gone through a lot. I haven't shared with everybody. I'm one of the lucky ones because I have support and I have friends and I have family. And there are a lot of people out there who don't. And if, you know, if we can help one person lift themselves up and get back on their feet, I think that's worth the world.
Councilmember McNeil.
Councilmember Doer, I agree wholeheartedly. There's a lot of people struggling out there right now. As an elected leader like you, we get to see it, experience it firsthand. As a parent of two kids that are in the North Shore School District, both parents working, our kids are struggling. And having kids in school, I know other parents that are in the same position. So there's many different forms of struggle right now. And ensuring that we do the work in the will of the people and making sure that we're helping the right people within our community and taking our time and getting it right, which we're doing, which I know we're doing. And I look forward to having more discussions on this. I, I just want to say thank you to the council for ensuring we've gone through the process to ensure that we're looking at all the people within our community that need help. Because we, we talk so much about equity and inclusion and fairness. It's so important that we get it right. It's so important that we look through it through the different lenses that are within our community. Because there's, there's a big population within our community that is underserved and is not really talked about. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're having these tough conversations and then making sure that we're, we as a council, as a body of seven, when we make these decisions, we are looking at all of the different groups of, of people within our community, seniors, youth, whomever it might be, and making sure we get the help in the right place. So Councilmember Doer, I'm right there with you.
So I'll say for myself, 2020 has, yeah, been, been a tough year. But I'm, you know, very thankful that I do have such great people on council. They're easy to talk to. You know, I've been trying to reach out a little bit more, talk some more. Community has been reaching out to me more. I've been trying to connect and learn more. I think that's the, you know, just one of the biggest jobs of elected officials are to connect with the people, listen to what they have to say. And we're in some unusual times. So you know, the, the usual playbooks and all the best planning sometimes doesn't work out. Sometimes you just have to do the right thing. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm grateful and thankful for people coming and talking. I mean, there's been numerous times in the past that, especially when we're in public, I said that I appreciate people coming and making public comment. I think it's the, the best part. I think it, it's the, the best part of, you know, small city government. I mean, you, you are in the same location like councilmember McNeil was saying, you know, federal, you know, is way across the country. It's, you know, no one, such a small percentage of people are going to go to Washington DC and meet with legislators, but I mean, here we are. It's can go meet people, have, uh, you know, coffee with them, go have food, talk about issues, get to know people, get to know each other better. So yeah, so, um, tough times, but, uh, brings us together a little bit more. So it's one of those silver linings is we communicate in different ways and, and thankfully, virtual communications improving. This meeting was so much better than what we have had up to this point. So, thankful for Zoom. Uh, WebEx was challenging at best, but, but yeah. Our city clerks, I just want to say thank you to both of them tonight. Uh, you know, we had a fair amount of public speakers tonight and man, they just knocked that out of the park. You know, people knew who they were. They just came right in, didn't have to wait. So that was great. Thank you so much.
Yep. Yeah, we're happier. Yay Zoom.
Yeah.
Veterans at, sorry, Mayor, do we have any veterans that work at city, the city of Bothell? Just a big, big, big shout out to, to all the veterans that work at, at city, city hall and all of our staff for amazing, amazing working through all these, these tough times. I just, a shout out to everybody at the city of Bothell. And our veterans for, for everything you do to, to keep us going. So.
We have a number of veterans on the fire department and the police department that I'm aware of.
Yep. All right. Looks like we're winding down a little bit. We still have our executive enclosed sessions to head off to. So I say we sign out on this and unless there's any action, we'll adjourn from our executive enclosed sessions. City attorney?
Yeah. And Mayor Olson, um, wire, can you please list the RTWs as to why we're going into executive enclosed session and an estimated time for those, um, of those discussions?
That is a great reminder. Uh, so we are going to be moving into executive session, uh, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42. Dot 30 dot 110, parent one, parent I. Uh, so let's see. It'll last, uh, 30 minutes and we'll announce if action is or, uh, or is not expected. So we're not expecting action at this point.
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor, before you go, can I just say that, um, I'm going to leave this meeting. We'll keep this meeting open. But I'm gonna open the WebEx meeting because we have to do the executive session in the WebEx. So give me about five minutes, take a five minute break. We'll start the exec session after that.
Yeah. And we also need to leave the meeting open. So in case there is an extension, we can come back and announce the extension through this Zoom channel.
All right. Sounds good.
Can we leave it? Can we leave it from the council end? We can.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So let's meet over on WebEx at nine o'clock.